Project is the road we chip ceiling plan. Looks like. We have a base bid. Total of two hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Project is the road we chip ceiling plan. Uh, looks like.
Okay, all good. Two hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Again, that's central paving ink. For the chip seal. Program. Project.
Then, um, they have the EMS departments. And a reporter and a surveyor. Um, you're good.
Oh, I, hang on, I guess, oh.
You're ready?
Yeah, we're ready for you. Sorry, Tom.
Oh, you're fine.
Of course, Acton is a little lower deposit again because. They were having issues in. Our signatures across to them.
That's been resolved?
We hope, when I'm not sure, I mean, they haven't responded anything negatively like we, and we've been getting that approved.
Okay.
So we're, that is. Here's some.
Jonathan O'Hara, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. And from merchants medical, six hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents.
Morning. This is a, our monthly report. Apparently. Three out of six ambulances are up and running. We have two backups that are up and running. And we have one in the. Shop getting bettered. So right now, we have a total of six ambulances that are. Ready to rock and roll with the exception of ones get, has to go get the bumper fixed. Transfers. We have done fifty-three transfers since last one. One out of town from Indy to here. One from Memorial Hospital. To Portage. Which is a. They know it's coming, they know it's here. Transfer start officially tomorrow. I just hired another paramedic just a few minutes ago. One, I got another one that's coming in. From before. So, two EMTs were this morning as well. Uh, training, I had to postpone the training. Uh, due to. People didn't sick. Uh, last injury was August fifth or still. Uh, if you run down a list of ambulances thirty-three oh eight. Current. Services are current. Up to date, forty-nine twenty-five, we can be old LaPort rig. That we purchased used. Uh, is. Up to date and running. It's gonna be the new medic two, Knox face says medic three, which is the newest one. It has nineteen-hundred miles on it already. Uh, five fourteen still unassigned, it's a reserve. Eighty-five is unassigned, which is another backup reserve, which. Those are the. Two of the diesels. The third diesel. Is in service. Medic forty-one chase car program. Which kicked off as of. The first. Went off without a hitch. Uh. They're running calls back to back covering the county, nothing has been. Unattended to, they run everything until. They're told. To cancel. Uh, of course, I still back them up, uh, to see whatever is going on in the middle of the night.
So how often, um, you needed to go out in your vehicle in addition to the chase car?
Last night. Since December first. And that was for special circumstances. Uh, the base. I still need the outside outlets, I did talk to him, he's just really tied up right now, but, uh, and I got another person coming out to give an estimate. On that one. Still waiting over to finish the installs. Grants, uh. Last month when I came in, I knew I had gotten a grant. To grow our own EMS system. I found out what that grant was for, how much, for twenty-four thousand dollars. That's to send two paramedics complete this school. And two EMTs. As long as I work within that twenty-four thousand dollars. I could send. Three paramedics. Or five EMTs. Into advanced. So. We've got some EMTs, the drivers that we originally hired, that are EMRs, they're going to EMTs. They're both like bomb residents, they're killed. The paramedics that we're gonna send. We're making a paramedic advisory board. To pick who the candidates are. Who is eligible, who's gonna stick around. Go, we put the money into eighty-five hundred dollars into their school.
Is there a timeframe for all this spelled out in the grant terms?
Twenty twenty-six. Uh, they, I just sent our paperwork off. Thursday, I do believe for W nines and everything else. Uh. Uh, we did receive a thousand dollar donation, but we haven't received yet, it's eleven o'clock today. From Northern Indiana Community Foundation. And the winter coats have been ordered from the grants and donations. Now, back to the transfer from. It's gonna need restocked. I, I put in a transfer request of some of the funds I had left. Uh, meeting tonight. So far where I'm at is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, for. Stuff that I need. You would take fifteen thousand, it's what you already have in the maintenance fund. To fini- finish it.
So your, your request will just be to move money between line items within your budget?
Absolutely.
So you got it all?
I've got it all in my budget, actually I'm asking for less than what I have left, so the residual. Any questions?
And that's gonna cover what you've got in front of us for, looks like a power load system?
That covers us, which actually, you can go back to that, we have three ambulances that do not have the power load system right now. And we got one hundred and seventeen pounds for, you pick up. So it's gonna prevent us from having back injuries, working as comp issues from later on down line, some of our people are smaller than lift. But once, out here in the snow, bad weather, it won't take much.
So, money you just talked about gonna take care of all three of them?
Money, yeah, take care of all three of us. Questions?
I don't know, looks, that's, they're really great, Jim, it's good work.
Thank you.
That's, thank you.
Now, Tom, stand up.
Morning, guys, uh. I had Mr. Jim Scott, he's with the. Eastern Engineers, he's the gentleman that we, right now have the Ebsen open with upstairs. They're the vendor that helps, comes out and does the. Maintenance and everything else, if we need anything, you call him, he'll get a con, he'll get a guy over here to work on it. Uh, in front of you, we. We have the proposal from them. Uh, right now, if we wanted to purchase a new one outright. It'd be seventy-one nine. But, uh, he, he suggested that we do with the thirty-six month rental. Which is a hundred and forty-nine a month. And then, uh, one time freight and one time. Uh, document fees and. Then, uh. Donor needs thirty cents. And monthly fee would be a hundred and forty-nine. Then on the, we went and, uh. Manny got two other quotes for you guys, both out of, both out of camp. They're both out of LaPorte. Uh, the, you know, the first one is the T fifty-four seventy M. And they want sixty-one thousand nine ninety-five, uh, the total at the bottom is ninety-eight thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. It's, uh, about two thousand dollars more than what. Eastern wants.
Ninety-eight hundred.
Ninety-eight hundred, yeah, so, sorry about that. Yeah. Okay, and the, and the last one is also a camp, and that's a thirteen thousand, so that's. Really.
What's?
I was ballpark.
What's our, um, current usage? But how many? I mean, cause we, cause on this eastern quote, you've got. A thirty cent per square foot. Uh, additional fee, kind of a variable cost, what, so it would.
Well.
Approximately per month, what's our current usage with our existing system?
Uh, are you there, Mandy?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well.
As far, I'm just, just with your department.
Our department? Maybe once a month.
Okay.
Her department might be. Between five and ten times a month.
Okay.
What she does, they scan stuff in. From. Where it brings it to her, and then. She, uh, if she has to, she'll, she'll have to print it off and go through our. Uh, Gwen to get it, and then, um, the planning commission uses it also, we, we should, we're sharing the cost every ways. And I'm not sure what, uh, she probably uses it maybe once or twice a month also.
Okay.
And what's the maintenance on, if we buy it or if we rent?
What are you paying them for maintenance? I don't remember, I didn't put that on numbers.
Um, I think we're paying like a hundred. Between us, each, we're paying like a hundred and forty dollars. A month.
Each of you?
Each of us, it's out of a line item.
Close four hundred.
Yeah, I think.
I figured around seven, eight hundreds with their spending per year, that's why I recommended the rental. Um, cause their service contracts included in the rental. So the one forty-nine covers the equipment and the thirty cents covers all the consumables and your service contract. So, um, this is where they're paying consumables separately and paying for a service contract. So with the rental plan. Um, it would be easier to budget less than two hundred dollars a month, instead of spending seventy-two hundred. Well, that was kind of the scenario on why we chose. The rental planning for Stark County.
And that's one forty-nine a month for all three of them.
Yes, yeah.
Hundred and forty-nine per.
Yeah, we can buy that, we would buy that by three. But, uh, the only problem. Gentlemen, is we don't have it budgeted for this next coming year, so we're asking you guys to help. With this year, then after, the next year, we would pick up the following two years. And then if we want, we want to, with technology the way it is, then we can. Go into another one or keep this one and just do another contract.
So one forty-nine a month with three-year contract?
Yeah. And right, and. We're paying, um. Currently, each office right now is paying a hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
And for one forty-nine, I did factor in the trade-in of fourteen hundred. Cause it normally was gonna be a hundred and eighty-nine, I took that trade-in and factored into one forty-nine. So you are getting something for the current, uh, unit that you guys own.
And then we'll do color and then.
Yes, yeah, and it's updated, one of the other things I told Tom too, the current device is, uh, on HP's non-service support. So the end of next year, we may not be able to service it if we had major particles out, so it'll be another reason why we're looking at an upgrade. Unfortunately, technology dictates, you know, that, uh. Uh, updating equipment like that.
I think the rental is probably the better option, um, because in my experience with the HP models, if you leave them sit too long, those break, it tends to get. Um, clogged and you wind up buying this new set of cartridges every time you wanna use it.
Does the. Like people outside of the offices here, can't they come in and?
Yes, they can.
And they just, I mean, they gotta pay for it.
Yeah, uh, for, and I did go to the, uh. What's that, the Board of Accounts? And asked them if we can do, uh, an increase, and they said no, but right now for black and white, for a pretty good sized sheet is five bucks. If you want color, it's eight dollar. We, in, in any. Any nonprofit in the county, we. We don't charge them anything. But if it's like, you know, somebody comes in off the street and they want a big map of the county, we can scan it, print it for them. And, and give them, but we do have maps themselves. Of the county upstairs that people can take for free also. But it's, I guess.
But we have, we have a fee structure, should, should anyone outside of the county?
I guess it would be like a specialty, something out of the ordinary.
Well, it's just, just like requesting copies of paperwork from any other departments, there's a fee for pages printed.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's like. Us three, but all, the, all the other offices, we try to work with each other, and with, and with the new one. Like Jim was telling us, me and Mandy, with the new one. Mandy's office. It's got a bigger screen. And have it, they'll have their own, uh, file, so she can do everything and from their office. And not have to bother Gwen, and she, and if we're not here in the office, she don't have to wait a day or two for somebody to do something for her. It's same thing with the planning, planning commission, if they needed something right away. We're not here, they can still do their own.
Yeah.
And. Well, I've talked to. I've talked to Jim, and when we do get this new one, we'll get everybody together, we'll have a little bit of. We train them. So we're all on the same page. Cause right now, this old one. One has fired up. Has to sit for a little bit. And just to scan it in. And hopefully it. Is then it a friend, it does have some issues every now and then.
So, the bottom line price on the thirty-month. The thirty-six month rental. Is that? Hundred and forty-nine a month plus the thirty cents per square foot in, that, does that include, or is this? Warranty, uh, for seventeen hundred dollars in addition to that?
Uh. Seventeen.
The two-year, two and three-year extended?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, um, so that is, that warranty is based on a purchase price.
Okay, so you're, you're, so that's, 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 that, that warranty is not applicable if we go with the rental?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that's why, uh, one forty-nine, the thirty cents will cover the rental and the service. Um, and then also too, um, if you take the one forty-nine times thirty-six, uh, it comes out to fifty-three sixty-four. So there's additional savings to accounting instead of doing a, a purchase.
Right, yeah.
Thirty cents a square foot, how big is the pitch?
Um, I'd say four foot by three foot.
Yeah, majority is twenty-four by thirty-six, so that's six square feet, so if you have a dollar eighty, then what it costs the county. And if you do have someone coming in, I heard you're charging five and eight, so that does cover, you know, um, that additional labor and service. So, if you had a lot of usage, I probably wouldn't recommend this thirty cents a square foot, but their usage is probably around two to three hundred square feet a month. So, we're, we're looking at the top end, maybe another ninety dollars a month on the high end.
Of it, if we decided a year from now, we'd rather buy it than change before, are we able to buy it?
Yes, yes, we can do that, absolutely.
I don't, that sounds good to me.
Yeah. I need the. Get a more detailed, um, contract for the rental?
Yes, you will, you will get that, um, I can have. My contract specialist actually emailed at that time, so that, uh, a lot of, uh. Uh, government institutions likes to have their lawyer kind of go look at. Certain conditions, and sometimes there's a modification that may fit your needs a little bit better, and then we can be able to modify that. So I'll get that over to them today.
Alright.
Make sure you sign with Justin.
And then I'll get, I'll get it with Mandy and we'll look over it and then I'll. Make. Scan a copy and send it over to Justin.
Alright.
That sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thanks gentlemen, appreciate it, all we have to do is pay more stuff.
And we're winning that from pending Justin's. Oh, we'll probably. We'll probably have to be a team captain. So is there a motion? Well, I'll make a motion to, um. Utilize team cap funds to, uh. Acquire the thirty-six month rental pending review of contract terms.
Absolutely, I'm in all's in favor, uh. Thank you guys, thank you. I'm getting that, thank you. Then we have the sheriff.
I need to get with him. Hi Sheriff.
Hi, how we doing today? Let's see, oh. Uh, what we're asking for is permission to, uh. Convert one of our rural sergeant spots into two corporal spot, or our, our rural sergeant left. And we wanna convert that, his salary to two corporals. Uh, would be the additional money to the county, no additional personnel or anything. It'd just be the difference between a patrolman and a sergeant, we're gonna split that and make two corporals. Uh, the primary reason for doing that is to have more supervision, especially at night shift, on the night shift. Um, but it's a, you know, and it, it would not be a merit position. So if somebody got it and didn't, they weren't working out, then we'd be able to change them around, but we hope that we, that wouldn't happen, but. You never know, you know?
I don't hear it, it's the, uh. The corporal oversees the sergeant. But you won't have a sergeant.
Well, we, I don't know, that must be a typo or.
I say corporal over a sergeant, that's not, that's not the, I'm not used to seeing that in a chain of command.
I didn't read the job description, I copied it from the guys.
Okay.
My bad.
So we won't have sergeant, we'll have corporal.
We'll have two corporals instead of a sergeant.
Not any money, but we'll just take the extra, well, paid from the sergeant.
Right, there would be no additional cost to the county at all.
Right. And have you paid like just on top of the officer?
Right, right. Multi, yeah, so wise.
Well, thank you.
Is there a motion on that?
I make motions.
On second, falls in favor, alright.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. April, if you will, will you change it?
I'll correct it and send it back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to have Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Charlie. Merry Christmas.
Okay, uh, wait. Well, oh.
Thank you guys for having us, Mary and I are gonna provide a quick update and then I'll introduce you, I brought, uh. With me, Jim Morris from Surf, they just keep rolling, it's very exciting, we're excited about that. Um, so, wanna talk real quick about Ready Two, Ready is a grant opportunity through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Um, these are regional grants, our grant will be, uh, if application will be done by the Northwest Indiana Forum. On behalf of the seven county region that is part of the forum. And we are looking at a few projects that we're hoping we can get, uh, some assistance with through the grant, one of them is the hotel project. I'm working with a fellow from the IEDC, and he seems to think that this could be part of the destination development piece of Ready. Um, there are different pillars of Ready, one of those is destination development, uh, they're looking at capital projects, actually. Instead of programming type things, they, infrastructure, housing, um. Uh, anything to do with promoting tourism, so those are some of the projects, but, um, hotel project. Um, I am currently working on a, uh, housing development in North Johnson. With officials there, um, through the IH CDA, there's a max credit program. That has been offered to four counties, Stark County being one of those, where, um, we need additional. Uh, affordable housing, workforce housing, so we're actually looking at a nice development in North Johnson and hoping that may also be part of Ready. And then the third piece are the kayak launches, and I will let Mary give an update on those, two of those, uh, kayak launches have been funded. And will be, um, starting construction with, here when it gets nicer outside. But, uh, looking at three additional kayak launches along the yellow river to promote again tourism, Ready is also looking at things that will, um. That work for the whole region, I mean, you know, somebody from Lake County would wanna come down, they would stay for a weekend in our new hotel, they would. Um, you know, float the Yellow River and kayaks, canoes, or, uh, and that sort of thing, so these are some of the projects that. We're really hoping that Ready Two will have fun this time around, uh, there's a portal, Mary and I will be putting projects in the portal through the nineteenth of January. Um, these projects may not be, um. There's gonna be a lot of projects in there, so they may not disseminate which ones will be part of Ready until perhaps next summer. Um, grant monies for the projects or matching monies, I should say, for the grant. Uh, would not need to be committed until twenty-five. Uh, so I will let Mary talk more about kayak piece.
And the kayak piece, I have sent everyone an email on Friday, just to give you some background before we got here. This was something, um, I worked with the park board previously. To do a big grant from the state to try to get these kayak launches funded, it was. Unfortunately not. Funded, they funded the Bob Ross Museum instead, uh, happy little trees, much love to Bob Ross, but that, um, we're still trying to get. Our kayak launch piece going. The CBC board, which I sit on, has provided funding for two of the five launch sites, the Whitehaven Park Launch. And the Confluence of the Kankakee and Yellow River sitting in the point. We're working with, or the county and the city of Knox are working with Bobolloy on those projects, which will begin construction in the spring. I, as Lisa mentioned, under Ready, we are looking to try to get the other three considered as a Ready project and funded. And those sites are eleven hundred East, State Road twenty-three and seven hundred North. Which then would allow the county to say, we have a blue trail for. Paddle sports enthusiasts kayak, paddleboard. Canoe, or even just people who like to float the river. And market that as a true destination and something for both locals and visitors to do. So, ask Bobolloy to re, to rework his opinion of probable cost for this, because we need it for Ready. And the total cost estimated for the three sites I mentioned, eleven hundred East, twenty-three and seven hundred North. Is one hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred forty dollars. Ready is a four-to-one local match, which means the local portion from all sources. Is one hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars in funding commitments, we're not asking for the money right now, we're just asking for. The commitment, if this is considered, lots of ifs, if this is considered. By the forum to be included in Ready, and if the state says, yes, you can go ahead and do this, we would need the funds in twenty-twenty-five. And for the local match, we're working, they want to see buy-in from public, private and philanthropic. Jackie Ryan at the Community Foundation is working on the philanthropic piece with us. And Lisa and I are working on the private funding piece with some of our partners in economic development, some. Local folks who would want to contribute to this, so we are looking to the county for. A pledge if this grant is received for funds we would need in twenty-twenty-five. For some money to go toward this, and we're under a time crunch because of course the state is hurry up and wait. And so we are just. Unfortunately, kind of in a quick turnaround with this. Before coming to this meeting today and asking. Before coming to this meeting today and asking you for this, wanted to make sure. There would be an available source of funding in twenty twenty five. So had we had a conversation with Dave Pierman last week and he advised. The county by then will be starting to receive some of the payments from the solar developments. And he didn't, he thought this would be an appropriate use of that. So we are asking the county to please, and Lisa and I will be at the council meeting tonight as well. Consider twenty five thousand dollars as a pledge. In twenty twenty five from that solar money for this project. If all of those contingencies are realized and the state says, yes, we will approve this as a ready grant. And I, we, as Lisa mentioned, we need to get everything into this grant portal with. The Northwest Indiana Forum by January nineteenth. The council has a meeting and the commissioners as well on January sixteenth. If you wanted to think this over and let us know then. But it would be a very quick turnaround for someone to get us a letter to get it into the portal, so. All of that to say, that is what we are considering for this piece of Ready, but we feel like it would be very beneficial. To the county, both for our local residents to enjoy as well as for visitors. I've got a book, I'm not kidding, this thick at the office. With all of the information from that prior grant, including numerous letters of support from. Local folks as well as regional and statewide organizations saying, we think this would be a fantastic thing. It fits with the character of your county as beautiful natural area and destination. And it fits in the kind of what you're doing here, so. That's our request for consideration today for that specifically for that ready project.
I would consider if the solar.
I don't think it's too much of a of a risk for to pledge twenty five thousand. Um even even outside of, you know, solar stuff between between CBC funds. The park board funds and potentially seated. I think that's would be a tough uh. Ask to meet. I s- I I think I think it's safe to pledge that for twenty twenty five. The preference being that the revenues from solar uh are coming in. And going towards that, but even if there's some sort of unexpected delay, we should be safe.
Thank you very much.
So with the motion and second, all are in favor.
Thank you, and we'll keep you posted on that and we'll be talking to the council tonight as well and then. Once we receive all of the necessary approvals, we'll ask um for a formal letter. To include with that grant application, but that would be a really big deal, we think, for the county, so I think you've just made my day.
Was it five years that we've been talking about?
It's been a while and even if the, you know, our intention is to do to eventually get these funded, even if. We have to do them one at a time, the faster we get them funded, the sooner we can market this. And say, hey, you can float our river, you can start at the Stark Marshall County line. And at the, you know, start at the eastern end of the county, end at the western end of the county. And put in and out at points in between and what a great way to, what a great way to see and appreciate our natural beauty.
So um. Has the park board or some other entity already secured all of the either access rights or easements? Where the construction is going to take place for these?
Bobolloy is working on that and I believe, yes, but I will check with him. I know the site on twenty three, uh we have a local person who is donating that property. And I need to, I spoke to Kathy last week. We need to make sure that property is transferred, but that is that person's intent. And Bob's been taking care of all of the permitting and all of the processes, but. We'll make sure eyes are dotted and t's are crossed with property rights, we're not gonna just come onto someone's property and force ourselves.
Yeah, cuz there's, I mean, there's. It looks like a fairly lengthy path here at the uh eleven hundred east site and um. And I'm not sure about how wide the easement is, I know there's. You know, the area where people park just to get on the river already on seven hundred east, but um I don't know if there's. An easement available for us to use use and if it's our easement to use. You need to make sure that's in place.
Of course, the property owner on seven hundred east has been very supportive of this project. But we will, of course, before we commit to anything, make sure we've got all of the necessary official permissions for that. So thank you very much.
Um quick update, Wackles, the small machine shop, we expect them to open very shortly. We would like to have a ribbon cutting for them in the next few weeks. They've been waiting on power from Nipco and had a couple of glitches, but they should be opening very soon. Excited about that, um I will leave you guys a copy, uh this is the Northwest Indiana Business Magazine, it comes out quarterly. Um there is an article in there regarding the E Day Awards, uh Mary and I were awarded. A small business advocate of the year uh in the north. The whole Northwest Indiana region, so uh we're very excited about that and hopefully. As Stark Tank continues to evolve this uh here in the county, um we will continue that. That journey with small business and we're excited to to have been awarded that, we call that our church directory. That's you guys, if you wanna keep that. The other thing, so I do want to introduce real quick Jim Morris with Surf Internet. He is here because of another exciting announcement.
So yeah, um Jim was Surf Internet, thank for having me, just wanna introduce myself today. Um we do, we provide fiber internet to homes and communities throughout Indiana, uh Michigan and Illinois. Uh we've got some work we're doing in the area now, um we're looking at some projects for next year in the county. And so um wanted to just introduce myself and then follow up. Probably after the holidays with um a meeting for with some more details, what we're looking in, Sam Pierre. Boots Lake and some other areas.
And Sam here will be very excited.
So you guys are participating in NLC four?
Yeah.
Okay, are you um planning on participating any in the uh? The B potential, applying for the B funds coming through the Indiana Rob Dan.
We are, we're working on that, um a lot of what we do is self-funded though, um so. Depending on the density of the area, we um we self-fund a lot of areas and then maybe we sprawl out with some grant money.
Yeah, cuz that's my concern is is, you know, the areas that are, you know, the density is closer to one residence per square mile.
Yeah.
Um that's, you know, and that's where those funds from those two programs I think need to be applied and if if you're. Going to participate in that, I it's it's very good news to me.
Right.
And I I hope we're not just going for the for the denser low hanging fruit, we can actually get out to those areas.
Yeah, sure, I understand it, everybody needs to be served like, you know, with that um. Usually what we do is we'll start in the denser areas and then have like a pace two or pace three and sprawl out once the funds are available.
Alright.
But I'll be following up after the meeting.
Sounds great, and my last piece, I'm gonna read this because if I stir, if I get on the.
Read it quickly before before you get you choke up.
I will, I've already choked up once today. I'm leaving the foundation early in January to pursue another opportunity. I will continue making a positive impact in our Indiana communities in my new capacity. I've been with, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose it. The foundation for the past eighteen years. Over the past three, I have worked diligently to rebuild relationships with elected officials, continue working with local industry. And small businesses to make sure there be needs are met, worked closely with internet service providers. To bring fiber infrastructure into our communities. I continue to work on the hotel project and I'm working on a major housing project in North Johnson currently. Inasmuch as bringing large companies to Stark County may be the desire of some. I have made it my charge to make sure our local industries have what they need to continue to grow and start counting. I'm very excited to have been involved with our recent solar projects. That will provide millions of dollars in unrestricted revenue to Stark County for many years to come. Thank you for the privilege to serve in my capacity as director of our local Lido for the last three years. I wish everyone the absolute best and I hope you all have a very, very Christmas and New Year.
I hate to hear that, congratulations and hope you the best.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the efforts you put in, both in your current role and your previous roles.
Well, I appreciate you guys and, you know, I very, you know, I'm very passionate, obviously, about my work at the foundation and. My hope is that it continues and everybody moves forward and. Does great things in Stark County, I think we've made a um a dent in in the things going on here. And I will be not too far away, so.
Have you talked to your board yet?
I I did let the board know, but um yeah, I wanted you to know, I will, my last week in the office will be the first week in January. So thank you guys for everything, I think we've made great strides.
Good luck.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright Jessica, yes, here you are. So we've had some back and forths about um. What do you want to lease from us now?
Yeah, so we have already gone through the easement part of it.
Yeah.
And now we're on to where they need to have the lay down yard and so I brought. The lease and on the back, the last page is the showing where. And so what they're gonna do, they're going to take you a monthly fee. Um sometimes they just pay like a flat fee and then this one is gonna be a monthly fee of fifteen hundred dollars. For a year with the option to um extend it an extra six months if necessary. But they'll notify you before the year is over, if that's needed.
Okay.
It's a pretty short project, so I don't think that they're hoping to get it done before that, but just in case something happens.
And here's the, is there a cleanup?
Um yeah, they're gonna clean up, but it does say in there that um they're gonna put down the stone pad. Two liter by two hundred, um and they're hoping to be able to leave that. If you guys could use it, they would like to leave it, um if that's not an option. We can, we can talk about it.
I mean, long as it's stone only.
Yeah, it's just.
Pour concrete and stuff.
They're not gonna do that, anything besides stone, they'll be sure to um clean up and remove. If there's any damages, same thing with that lease, uh if there's any runs, very damaged that bad. Um you guys would just stay in contact with me and I'll work with. So this is just in addition to for construction.
Yeah, Rachel sent it to me last week, she got on the high points year term, six month renewal, less he's option. Fifteen hundred dollar a month rent, there's mutual indemnity in it, the repair provision, I think it's. Section seven in there, that's just says all maintenance repairs are on on them as they're gonna see. So I I mean, as long as you guys are okay with the depictionary, because I don't know layout without looking at the picture, I'm I'm fine with it.
Yeah. It looks good to me, if I like the fact that the driveway is coming in off of that access radius rather than off of. Five hundred. So yeah, that's, looks good, I would have liked to have gotten the the other. Previously leased spot there next to the substation cleaned up, but that didn't happen, so but. It looks like a pretty work, pretty good and workable solution. Um I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement, so. Motion and second, all are in favor.
Okay, who wants to be the signer? Alright, I'm gonna let you find my. So did you wanna go through everything?
Let's. We need to make sure this is written. Oh here, let's take this page.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Just like the other one, there's a lot of pages to it, isn't there?
Making sure I don't miss any empty spaces. So it'll be. So sign print.
It's not as many as last time, though, I think we had like six notarized.
Which part of the agreement is mentioned exhibits.
And each company does it differently. And so um.
And it's just.
And then, and then that's.
Okay, and you'll get a copy of this back to us once it's counter signed?
Yeah.
Alrighty.
And then um if you want, I can make copies today, like we did last time, or just mailing us okay? And then we're gonna give the check upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs, we are in the office and and yeah, just get copies to up to them as well.
Okay.
When you can.
Okay, great, thank you guys so much. Thanks, have a Merry Christmas.
Are you ready for the highway department business?
Um so we went through the bids, um came in a little higher than we had anticipated, but I'm gonna let him, I'm gonna let Tim explain as to why.
Okay.
Hi, Tim Allen's with VS Engineering, so on reviewing the bids, they were thirty three, approximately thirty three thousand over what was originally approved. Uh we advise or we recommend to take it under advisory, table to the next meetings to do further research. The reason for this increase compared to our estimate is due to some of the material costs. Was higher than what we were anticipating due to our previous bid um bids that we used as our recommendation. So moving forward, we're going to review it and make our recommendation, but we would like to move that to the next meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to table approval of bids. All in favor? And that's, that was this that we're pushing to, right? I'll entertain a motion to approve the vendor claims the amount of. Three hundred ten thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and forty eight cents, we'll move. Motion and a second, we're all in favor? I'll entertain a motion to approve the payroll claims the amount of two hundred eighty seven thousand twenty four dollars and eight cents. The motion and second, all are in favor? The motion and second, all are in favor?
All right.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Monday, December fourth meeting. So move with the motion and a second, or all in favor? One of them next month. Yeah, we have a job description for the health department. Have you seen?
Yeah, I looked at it.
Okay. Since no one from the health department here is, is here to explain, do you have? All understanding of what's, what's being asked?
No, no, I'm on another one. I don't, we might say with the next one.
Okay.
And ask more.
All right, so which one, do you wanna move forward on?
Neither, neither one.
Neither?
No.
Okay.
Until next maybe.
Okay.
I'm like that.
Okay, and I'll second the motion to table this. All in favor?
All right.
And then. Let's, I don't even.
I have any pickup.
Okay.
I make a motion, repurchases pickup from the county highway for five thousand.
Okay.
And I'm planning on trying to use it for the hard board.
I'll second that motion with a motion and a second, are all in favor?
Aye.
You need this, or?
Maybe.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Yeah.
Any, do you wanna read that or we just?
I just, I think, yeah, we just.
Okay.
Accepted, I mean. Is there any other business we need to discuss?
I'm kinda looking at where you said about the bowl that's. Still kinda looking to switch it out.
Get something smaller that'll fit on the sidewalks for clearing the snow?
I can use that out there.
Okay.
Definitely in my, no.
Okay. Anything from this side of the table?
Good to think of.
Okay. You have anything for us?
I don't have anything uh, in documentation or writing yet, but I, I could mention that soon we will be. Working on doing an upgrade for our CAD server.
Okay.
And our phone server. Phone server is. Reaching at the end of this quarter, the end of support's life. And all that will entail is spinning up a new virtual server and migrating all the data over. That one's not a big one, but the CAD server requires a physical hardware refresh. And everything that contains.
Terry, anything worse?
I got one thing. I mean, what's the latest on the change for the garage?
Estimated install date is March.
Yeah, you know, I have something. It's probably gonna be more geared towards you though, Justin. Just wondering, I know that we finally found next era's signed agreements. And it looks like you were following up with Mammoth, so do we not have any signed agreements for Mammoth?
I think I gave Rachel the signed economic development report. Is that what you guys were?
Yeah, we were looking, well, it looks like when she signed me everything, it looks like maybe all three documents go at the same time. Which is the decommissioning, economic development and the road use agreement, and it sounded like on December fifth. We actually didn't have any of that for Mammoth.
We had the EDA, so sent that along. The other two agreements, cause I think what they did is after they signed them, they mailed them to the camp. They didn't mail them back to me, they mailed them to the county. And somebody just didn't send them along to me. There are signed agreements, I verified with Mammoth's attorney. I just, he said he was gonna send them to me, I've not gotten them yet, but.
So we're still waiting to get those?
Yeah, I, I have seen the, the fully executed sign economic development agreement though, cause I did forward that along. So I did have a copy of that in my email, just not the other two, the one.
Okay, yeah, she didn't send me the one for Mammoth, so.
But you, but you've gotten word from, from Emmett's attorneys that those documents do exist?
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why I would have had the EDA, just this is the duly executed EDA, not the other two, but yes.
Yep. My, all signed.
And I guess my only question is, how do we make sure that that doesn't happen again? Right, it's kind of a big deal to have so a large amount of money out there potentially that we didn't have copies of. I don't know. Like whose responsibility would that be in the county to make sure that we have that stuff on file?
I, I think it's a shared responsibility, not only with our board, but with the, I mean, given that most of the mail. Is received by the owner's office, and then I don't know what role the recorder would have in ensuring that those documents are. Are properly kept, but I mean, it's, uh, there's a shared responsibility.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And Don Redford Nelson.
Yeah, that's the most important thing.
Right, right.
Since Mammoth is the one we should get paid from first, cause they'll be done first, so.
All right, is there a, any other business? There, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move, we are adjourned. Thank you all.